Call the October 12, 2017, meeting of the Parker Planning Commission to order at 7:00 PM. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, absent is Dwayne, seated for Dwayne is Eric, absent is Rich, seated for Rich is Ruth Ann, and absent is Sasha, and seated for Sasha is Kim. Everybody's up here tonight. Are there any changes to or corrections to the Planning Commission meeting minutes from September 28, 2017?
No.
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 Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the September 28, 2017 minutes.
A second.
It's been moved by John, seconded by Eliana, that we approve the minutes from the September 28, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. Signify your approval by yes.
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 Abstain.
Are there any additions to or deletions from the agenda?
No, sir, there are not.
Okay. Then we'll move to item number seven, which is a public hearing, Highlands at King Point zoning, which was continued from the September 28 meeting. We will open the public hearing at 7:02. All right, Carolyn.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. We'll be reviewing the Highlands at Kings Point planned development zoning this evening. This application is a request by Douglas County Associates to annex and zone approximately 20 acres of land into the town of Parker for commercial and open space purposes. Appropriate verification of the required public notice has been provided by the applicant. On September 19, 2016, Town Council approved a pre-annexation agreement for the Highlands at Kings Point property. Approval of this zoning request will create two planning areas. Planning Area 1, located on the west side of E470, is approximately 15.45 acres and will be zoned for commercial uses. The commercial zoning for PA1 consists primarily of retail, sales, and restaurant, and other sales tax generating uses. The allowed uses in PA1 are limited to those that are sales tax generating. This is to offset the cost of the construction of Kings Point Way as a capital project. The owner of Highlands at Kings Point Development also owns a parcel of land north of the subject property that is identified as Kings Point South and is zoned for single-family residential development within the city of Aurora. The Highlands at Kings Point Development will provide commercial services for this new residential area, as well as the new Vantage Point multifamily development to the west. Planning Area 2, located on the east side of E470, is approximately three acres and will be zoned as private open space. Planning Area 2 is located north of the detention pond, right there where the little red arrow is pointing, for the Stone Canyon Apartments, and does not currently have access. As you can see, that detention pond blocks access to PA2 from Cottonwood Drive. Because there is no access and maintenance would be problematic, the town declined acceptance of PA2 as public open space. The Parker 2035 Master Plan identifies the Highlands at Kings Point property as mixed use within the E470 corridor. This designation recommends higher intensity uses, including multifamily, senior housing, assisted living facilities, office, retail, and restaurants. The proposed planned development to allow commercial sales tax generating uses is consistent with the Parker 2035 Master Plan. All utility providers have indicated that they can provide service, subject to utility improvements, through submission and approval of construction plans. Staff has reviewed the proposal and determined that the project is consistent with the Master Plan, provides adequate access, infrastructure, drainage, facilities, and design considerations. Utility providers have confirmed capacity and availability. And finally, the project satisfies the nine criteria required in the land development ordinance to rezone the property. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve the Highlands at Kings Point planned development zoning. Staff, of course, is open to any questions. Also, the applicant is here this evening and can answer any questions you might have of him.
Questions for Carolyn?
Carolyn, who's going to be responsible, as the town has turned down PA2 as public space, to maintain that property?
The property owner. The property owner actually, let me go back, owns the property, I don't know if you can see my arrow, up here as well, so it's possible that at some point that property will have access from the north.
Okay.
I have a question.
Sure.
That area falls within a visual resource, a medium to high visual resource area for the town? Is there anything in the zoning or the requirements that's going to make sure that the developer maintains the visual resource as they come down the E470 and people come into Parker?
Very good question. So this is Stacy, also at the Planning Department. So, right now, the height is not listed within the planned development guide for the property. So what that means is that the property reverts back to our land development ordinance, and it would fall under the commercial zoning guidelines. The commercial zoning guidelines restricts height within the commercial area of 35 feet in height. Right now, at this time, the town has not received a development proposal, so we don't know what's going to be developed on the property. So, once we receive a development proposal, that's when we would know the height, where the building's going to be placed on the property, the site layout, and so all that will be determined at time of site plan, and that's when we can really dive into those details to figure out how it's going to affect that view corridor.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions for Carolyn?
So who is exactly, public has full access to this PA2?
Well, it's actually private open space.
Private open space.
Right.
Further questions for Carolyn? Carolyn, does the applicant have a presentation or just?
They do not, but they are here to answer questions if you'd like.
Any questions for the applicant?
No.
No.
Okay. As this is a public hearing, we will open the discussion to public comment. If you have a comment on this matter before us, the Kings Point, Highlands at Kings Point, please step forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we will close the public comment. Commissioners, do we need further information from the staff or the applicant?
No.
No.
Probably so.
Okay. Do you have anything further, Carol? Okay.
I'm sorry, I turned off the mic. No, I do not.
Okay. Then we will close the public hearing at 7:09. Planning Commission discussion?
It's apparent this property's going to come in, bring in sales tax revenue, which I think is vital to not only offset the cost of the road construction, but long-term will create revenue for the town, very much in favor of it.
I would agree.
The mixed-use areas in the Master Plan, the commercial uses that have been mentioned fit well within those categories. The open space aids in the goal that's set out, Goal Number Six, in the Open Space and Trails Greenway Master Plan, so I think that I would support this.
It's good to see progress being made in this development, and once more vacant land going to higher and better use than just sitting there vacant. I'm in favor.
I agree.
I agree.
All right. I would concur with my fellow commissioners and see this as, again, as Rob says, the highest and best use for this property. So do we have a motion?
I move the Planning Commission recommend that Town Council approve the Highlands at Kings Point planned development zoning.
I second.
It's been moved by John, seconded by Rob, that the Planning Commission recommend that Town Council approve the Highlands at Kings Point planned development zoning. Signal your approval by yes.
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 All right, thank you. Item number eight. Carolyn, are we doing these concurrently or they're two separate items, eight and nine? Or Stacy?
These are going to be two separate items.
Okay.
And so we are going to do the rezoning first.
Okay.
And then the sketch and preliminary second.
Okay, all right. Item number eight on the agenda is a public hearing on the Hess Ranch planned development, First Amendment rezone. We will open the public hearing at 7:11. Stacy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and rest of the Planning Commission. So tonight's application is an application to amend the Hess Ranch planned development to adjust internal planning area boundaries within the 400 acres located on the east side of Crowfoot Valley Road. This is a result of the proposed realignment of North Pinery Parkway. In addition, the applicant is proposing to reserve the southeast corner of Bayou Gold Road and North Pinery Parkway for commercial uses and reallocate residential units within the internal planning areas. So a little bit of background on the property. The property was annexed into the town in 2003 and zoned Sunmark Plan Development. In 2007, the property was rezoned to the Anthology Plan Development. On September 21, 2015, Council approved the Hess Ranch Plan Development, which split the southern half of Anthology into its own standalone plan development. The proposed PD amendment only applies to that portion of the Hess Ranch Plan Development that is located east of Crowfoot Valley Road, which is outlined in red on this map. So the big change is the location of North Pinery Parkway, which is proposed to be moved further south within the development, which requires internal planning areas to be either relocated or changed. The proposed change in alignment will allow the roadway to connect to the revised alignment of North Pinery Parkway, as it will cross Cherry Creek to the east with an unincorporated Douglas County. In addition to the road realignment, staff and the applicant have also agreed to amend the zoning to allow for only commercial uses in Planning Area 44, highlighted in blue on this map. This is the southeast corner of Bayou Gold Road and North Pinery Parkway. Residential uses will be removed from this planning area, and the entire planning area will be reserved for commercial uses only. The 28 residential units which were originally allowed within this planning area will be moved to other planning areas within the portion of Hess Ranch Plan Development. The proposed PD amendment maintains the number of units, the amount of open space, the amount of parks, school, and fire department land allowed within the current zoning. The town's Master Plan identifies the Hess Ranch property as low-density residential, which allows for a maximum density of 2.2 units per acre. The Master Plan also identifies the intersection of North Pinery Parkway and Bayou Gold Road as a neighborhood center. Neighborhood centers are characterized as retail, office, or service commercial areas designed to serve the needs of the surrounding residents. Neighborhood centers also permit higher-density residential as transitions to the lower-density land uses surrounding them. These provisions are included within the mixed-use designated areas in the Hess Ranch Plan Development. The Hess Ranch Plan Development complied with the town's Master Plan when it was originally approved in 2015, and the proposed amendment will remain consistent with the town's Master So staff has reviewed the proposal and has determined that the project is consistent with the Master Plan and provides adequate access, infrastructure, drainage facilities, and design considerations. All utility providers have confirmed capacity and availability. The project satisfies the nine criteria required in the land development ordinance to rezon the property, and all notice requirements have been satisfied. Therefore, staff recommends the Planning Commission recommend that Town Council approve the Hess Ranch Plan Development, First Amendment. This concludes the staff report. We do have John Presswich with the applicant, and he does have a presentation for you, but I am available for any questions you might have beforehand.
Questions for Stacy?
No.
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 The applicant, want to step forward then, please? State your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is John Presswich with PCS Group. We're a land management and landscape architectural firm in the metro area. Our address is 200 Calamant Street, Denver, Colorado, 80223. Oh, sorry. That's okay. You know, we're very excited about being involved in the Trails at Crowfoot community. Stacy's done a great job in her presentation, so I'm going to try and keep it relatively brief. So, you know, before we even get into the project details, I wanted to take a moment, really, and acknowledge that any great project takes a team of dedicated professionals working together, and I don't mean just our consultant team. I wanted to take this moment and recognize the amount of collaboration we've had with the town of Parker Planning, Parks, and Engineering Departments throughout this whole process. Some, from the early and many meetings, all the way through the complex design and review process, we really have had a rich and rewarding experience in the crafting of this community. So the entire team has been working, you know, together to develop a thoughtful plan that responds to the site, the adjacent properties, a plan that makes economic sense, and satisfies all the required technical criteria. And this team has a tremendous amount of experience in creating communities throughout The ownership group consists of several individuals with extensive experience creating communities up and down the front range. And on this slide, there are a couple of images from one of the recent projects the ownership group is completing. It's the community at Laiden Rock in the city of Arvada. Laiden Rock was recognized last year as the ninth fastest-selling master plan community in the United States, and was actually the only Colorado community to make the top 25. So Stacy mentioned, kind of gave you, really, the project history, so I'm not going to go through that, you know, too much in this presentation, but we can certainly talk about Now, this is where I fall apart a little bit, because I was doing the presentation for the PD amendment all the way through the sketch plan, so I'll kind of stop when I get to the end of the PD, and then we'll pick up the presentation when we get to the sketch plan. But basically, we are ultimately requesting approval on three related items this evening, the first being the PD amendment. And, you know, generally, the amendment really is just some revisions to the planning boundaries to accommodate the road alignment. It was actually finalized after the original PD was completed. And the off-site road alignment is really the continuation of North Pinery Parkway, and the off-site design through Douglas County will connect across Cherry Creek to Parker Road. Go to the next one. Now, this slide depicts the currently approved PD on the left and the proposed PD on the right, and you can see that the overall land uses and general locations are consistent. Again, the biggest change is the extension of North Pinery Parkway, and this was done to match the road design that was completed after the original PD was approved. You can see the Douglas County road extension is highlighted on the far-right side of the slide in the light blue. And the alignment in the currently approved PD would not meet road standards and really anticipated connecting to Douglas County further north than where it was ultimately designed. Overall, we still maintain the same number of units that are already approved for the property. As the road shifted to the south, we're actually able to increase the size of the neighborhood park by about an acre. The open space at the zoning level remains at the 101.6 acres, and it actually increases when we get to the detailed sketch and preliminary plan. And then, as Stacy mentioned, you know, in collaboration with the town, we have restricted the mixed-use Planning Area 44 from allowing residential uses. It was important to the town to maintain a commercial use in that area, and, you know, we agreed with them. So the next slide, you know, we can leave this up or go through them, you know, at your wish. Really, it's, you know, the need exists for the proposal, and that was really drawn by the road. The ground is the right site for the proposed development, and we're really not changing anything in that respect. There really wasn't an error in original zoning, so that one doesn't apply. And the significant change in the area is really, again, related to the alignment of North Pinery Parkway. You know, adequate circulation exists, we haven't changed any of that. And then on the next slide, I think Stacy's been through this too, you know, addressed this all in the staff report, but basically, the amendment request will not change anything that's been previously anticipated. You know, we're consistent with the town Master Plan goals and maps and policies, and, you know, that's really it, this part of the presentation, so we'd be happy to answer any questions, and we've got our team here.
Questions for the applicant?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any further questions for Stacy?
I have a question. One of the things I noticed when I was reviewing the entitled uses and uses permitted by special review is that there is no affordable senior housing listed as a use by special review. Would it be possible to add that into the PD since we're amending it anyway?
So the requirement to add any uses into the PD at this time is that it can only be added into any planning areas that are on within this 400 acres of the Hess Ranch Plan Development.
Right.
And so if you wanted to add a use into the planned development, you can do that at this time if it's.
So we could use that, we could add that into the uses by special review under the mixed-use areas and planning development areas 36 and 35?
Yes, you could do planning areas 35, 36, or 43.
Okay. Well, I think, isn't 43, isn't that the one that's restricted for commercial retail use only?
44.
44 is, okay.
So Stacy, correct me if I'm wrong, but the zoning does allow for multifamily in there, which would allow for senior housing?
It does.
My concern is that if we don't specifically mention affordable senior housing, it may set up expectations in the future from future homeowners. So it seems to make sense to put that into the use by special review. Doesn't mean it automatically can go in, it has to come up before the Planning Commission again, but it might be wise to have some forethought in that area, especially given the discussion in our Master Plan of the need for senior housing in Parker.
Jason Rogers, Deputy Director for Community Development. One thing, just to, as a reminder for Planning Commission, obviously, our purview only goes to senior housing and/or multifamily. It does not go into the status of ownership of that housing, so it would just be senior housing or multifamily, not affordable or for rent or for sale, given that that's outside of our purview under the municipal code.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions?
None.
No.
No questions.
As this is a public hearing, we will open the discussion to public comment. If you have a comment on this matter, please step forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we will close the public comment. Further information from staff or applicant?
No.
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 We will close the public hearing at 7:23. Commissioner, discussion?
Well, it looks like a pretty minor change to previous concept, and I think.
It's already pre-approved.
Yeah, so I'm in favor of it.
I agree.
I support it.
I don't think, you know, I think the changes have been discussed between, it sounds like, the town planner and the developer, and they've come to what actually, to me, looks like a little better with some open space and things, so I'm for it.
If we don't approve this, we're going to have a road that doesn't go anywhere.
Road to nowhere. Yeah, I would concur with my fellow commissioners. Further discussion?
Nope.
No.
All right, do we have a motion?
I move that the Planning Commission recommend that the Town Council approve the Hess Ranch Plan Development, First Amendment, subject to the one condition contained within the staff report.
Second.
It's been moved by Rob, seconded by John, that Planning Commission recommend that Town Council approve the Hess Ranch Plan Development, First Amendment, subject to the one condition outlined in the staff report. Signify your approval by yes.
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 Item number nine is a public hearing on the Trails at Crowfoot Sketch and Preliminary Plans. We will open the public hearing at 7:25.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the rest of the Planning Commission members. So this is the Trails at Crowfoot Sketch and Preliminary Plan. This is an application for a sketch plan for 890 residential units on 400.2 acres, and a preliminary plan to create 753 single-family detached lots and 35 tracts, including a school site, a site for a future fire station, open space, and parks, on 406.68 acres within the Hess Ranch Plan Development. The preliminary plan includes additional acreage due to the inclusion of a detention pond on the west side of the Crowfoot Valley Road. So the proposed sketch plan is proposing a total of 890 residential lots within 14 planning areas. The sketch plan includes 136 residential units and paired homes within planning areas 35, 36, and 43, which are zoned to mixed use under the Hess Ranch Plan Development. The mixed-use planning areas are not included within the preliminary plan, and those planning areas are highlighted in blue on this map. The proposed preliminary plan includes a total of 753 single-family residential lots on 406.67 acres. The acreage between the sketch and preliminary plan increases due to the incorporation of a detention pond located on the west side of Crowfoot Road, and that's also highlighted in green on this map. The applicant has proposed a comprehensive roadway network to provide access to all internal land use areas within the Trails at Crowfoot. Two new full-movement access points are planned along Crowfoot Valley Road, one at the future Chambers Road, Bayou Gold Road, and the future North Pinery Parkway. So the development is proposing a total of 128.98 acres of open space, which satisfies the minimum requirements outlined within the annexation agreement and the development plan. In addition, the development is required to provide 17.59 acres of park space. The applicant is proposing a total of 19.18 acres of park space, which exceeds the minimum amount of park space required. Planning Area 38, located north of North Pinery Parkway and west of Bayou Gold Road, will be an 18.1-acre regional park that will be dedicated to the town of Parker, once Trail systems are proposed to provide connectivity throughout the development. A regional trail connection is proposed along the north and east side of the development, which will link into a future trail that will eventually connect to the Cherry Creek Regional Trail. One elementary school site, which is 11.1 acres, is proposed within the development. The proposed school site satisfies the requirements for school land dedication for this portion of the Hess Ranch development per the annexation agreement. And then a lot for a new fire station is also proposed within this development. So staff has reviewed the proposal and has determined that the project is consistent with the Master Plan, it provides adequate access, infrastructure, drainage, facilities, and design considerations. The utility providers have confirmed capacity and availability, and all notice requirements have been satisfied. So therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend that Town Council approve the Trails at Crowfoot Sketch and Preliminary Plans, subject to the five conditions contained within the staff report. This concludes the staff presentation. I'm available for any questions you may have, and again, we have the applicant here too, with his presentation.
Questions for Stacy?
What's the timeline for this, Stacy?
I'm sorry, couldn't I?
Timeline?
The timeline for construction? We could ask the applicant for a direct timeline, but I believe they would like to get started within the next year.
Does the trail system tie? Does the trail system tie in with what's already extant, or is it just going to be a trail around the community?
So there's not a lot of trails out there yet, so it will, this will be the beginning of the trail system. As new trails come on, they will all link together to provide access to the regional trails in the area.
Okay. Thank you.
With trail system, is that going to go over when it?
With trail system, is that going to go over when it eventually is built, over or under Crowfoot Valley? Or right across it, or do you have any idea?
I believe the trail will go under Crowfoot Valley Road. We can verify that with the applicant.
I'm sorry, I believe it was that grade, but.
That grade? Okay.
Stacy, could you back up the slides again and just show me again where that school site is located?
So the school site is highlighted in yellow on this map. It's at the very top, if I can get my mouse to show. So it's right here.
And it looks like it's bounded by roads on three sides, right?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
And could you highlight where the park is going to be located on there?
The big regional park, the 18.1-acre park, will be right here in the center.
Couldn't see it quite clearly, thank you.
And can you go back to the trails? Okay.
Stacy, will this neighborhood access Rich Lawn Estates just to the north? I mean, it looks, I can't tell if there's a road connecting there.
There is not a road that actually links into the Rich Lawn Estates. There's a road that goes up to the boundary of the property, if at such time that it is needed to connect to that property.
To that, is there an access out of Rich Lawn Estates that would allow that connection?
Currently?
Yes.
I do not believe so, no.
Okay.
Okay, does the applicant want to step forward? Continue your presentation.
Thank you very much. Is it coming up? Okay, there we go, sorry. So, you know, the sketch plan.
Is it green?
That's probably better, huh? So, the sketch plan and the preliminary plan, you know, they really work in concert. You know, initially, we talked about doing multiple sketch and preliminary plans for the property, but in working with the town, it was really determined it'd be best to do as much as we could, so basically the entire property. This really allowed the town and our team to analyze best the road connections, utility extensions, open space, park areas. So, you know, generally, the sketch plan further refines the zoning. In all, actually, the sketch plan depicts about 141 acres of both open space and park uses. It's over 35% of the property and actually, you know, obviously exceeds the PD commitment. Additionally, as we worked with the school district, we actually increased the size of the school site by about a half an acre. And, you know, all the land uses and locations are consistent with the PD. Again, the sketch plan maintains the same number of residential units that were allowed in the PD, and that's really, you know, how that works. Can you skip to the next one? Sorry. So this exhibit is the sketch plan map, you know, depicting the development areas, open space, parks, school, future fire station. And I really just included, it's probably hard to read, but the chart from both the sketch and preliminary plan to show you how the design continues to refine in terms of open space and parks. So, the original PD commitment was 101.6 acres of open space and a 17-acre park, total of about 119 acres. And the sketch plan, as I've mentioned, has further refined that to about 140 acres, and then the preliminary plan further refines the land plan. And ultimately, in the preliminary plan, we're depicting about 148 acres of park and open space, which is more than 46 acres of additional land that was originally dedicated or depicted in the PD. It's really a 45% increase. Do you mind skipping to the next one? So this shows the overall sketch and preliminary plan sort of in an illustrative manner. Crowfoot Valley Road on the west side with 300-foot buffer. The primary entry for the community will come from the intersection of Crowfoot Valley and Bayou Gulch, and then an additional access point further south along Crowfoot Valley Road with North Pinery Parkway. And this slide shows the concept for the primary entry monument. The idea in this is to take advantage of the natural landform and highlight as much of the existing natural vegetation on the hill slope as possible. The general landscape approach is to utilize primarily native plantings and masses of ornamental grasses to highlight key intersections. Here's the same monument, but just from an elevated perspective. I think you can, you know, see a little bit better how the natural landform kind of comes to a point at this intersection. That's Bayou Gulch and Crowfoot, and the monument has kind of slid into that natural landform. And then we anticipate using soft, really minimal uplighting to highlight the monument. And then something that came out of some of our earlier meetings that we worked on with staff was looking at appropriate buffers for the homes along North Pinery Parkway. And that area is generally depicted in this orange box. If you wouldn't mind. So we prepared a series of images modeled from the proposed design to review what the buffer area exclusively would look like. So, in general, we have about a 35-foot area beyond the right-of-way, where the rear of the proposed lots are, which in reality is about 48 feet from the back of curb, just with the tree lawn and everything. We're also proposing open fencing. We think that will increase the open feel. An additional element to create interest is meandering the walk within a combination of the right-of-way and the buffer area, interesting pockets for planting and landscape grading. And then finally, through a combination of native plantings and grade change, you know, we really think we've created an attractive buffer from North Pinery Parkway to the proposed homes. We've also developed sort of secondary monuments, and actually tertiary monuments, to complement the primary monument with the use of the same stone and stucco elements and the community logo. This monument is located at the intersection of Bayou Gulch and North Pinery Parkway. We also have community identity into all of the separate areas. So, oh, yeah, there you go. This exhibit, it highlights the pocket parks in each one of the little sub-neighborhoods, as well as the big neighborhood park in the master plan. And the pocket parks are, you know, generally centrally located. These circles that just popped up represent about a four-to-five-minute walk. So you can see that all the park locations provide excellent access for residents of the Trails at Crowfoot community to all the park amenities throughout the community. And then we're really excited about the work we've done with the Town of Parker Parks Department on the large neighborhood park. We think the design balances active and more passive areas, as well as manicured and more native areas. The park will include a baseball field, a multi-use field, playground area with shade structure and picnic areas, three tennis courts, they can actually be striped for up to 12 pickleball courts, a full basketball court, there's a pool, small clubhouse, looped crusher finds and concrete trail system, a nine-hole disc golf course, and we're providing off-street parking. The crusher finds trail loop is about a half a mile in length. And the park is generally higher in elevation on the west side and falls to the east, so the active amenities are generally on the high side of the park, and the more passive amenities are on the lower side of the park. This is a view looking across the multipurpose field, play area, and the baseball field can be seen in the top left. And then, of course, the off-street parking, tennis courts, basketball, and pool area in the top right. This is a view looking southeast. I think it really showcases the more active uses, sitting higher on the terrain, with the more passive areas of the park being lower in elevation. And then just to give a sense of character, we also modeled up one of the internal parks. If you remember, there were basically a smaller internal park for these different areas. Again, the general landscape character is a combination of enhanced native with well-defined manicured areas, and the pocket parks generally provide a turf play area, some seating, shade structures, playground equipment, that kind of thing. This is just another view of the pocket park on the left. Skip ahead, one more, sorry. On the left is one of the shade structures, kind of has a contemporary design, and I think it shows really the balance between the manicured and more native plantings. And then I think, you know, Stacy's really done a great job going through the criteria, so I'll kind of end my presentation at this point. Thank you very much.
Questions for the applicant?
I have several. The 141 open access space that you mentioned, what part of that is the big park that will be given back to Parker?
It's about 18 acres.
Okay. And that's included in the 141?
Correct.
Okay. Who's going to be fiscally responsible for the maintenance of that park?
Well, the park, can we go to the park slide itself? Maybe. I would say, I can't remember the exact acreage of the, there we go. In the top left, what the, what we've talked about with the Parks Department is they do not want to own or maintain the pool clubhouse area. They want that to be maintained by the, and owned by the development, or the community, I guess, the HOA. But the balance of the park would be built and dedicated and maintained by the town.
Okay. And my last question is, what was the price point on the homes? Do you have that?
I don't, yeah, there's, there is quite a variety. I don't know that we've discussed pricing with builders at this point, though.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Does Bayou Gulch currently intersect with Crowfoot, or is that going to have to require an extension of Bayou Gulch Road from where it?
Well, it will, it will ultimately cross and become Chambers on the other side of Crowfoot Valley.
Coming out from the Pinery West area there?
Correct, and we've, yeah, good question. We have coordinated with our neighbors to the south, actually on two access points. One, making sure, because they, their alignment was a little bit different. So we actually had to swing our road modestly to the west to hit their alignment. You can kind of see it. And then, can you point out the other connection into, I've forgotten, the community to the south of us?
CLO.
CLO.
So there's, Bayou Gulch Road comes down here. It'll be constructed also in Douglas County. The development south of here is a development that's going on in unincorporated Douglas County, and there's another access here, and this development down here is called CLO.
So we, we've worked closely with them to make sure that we're lining up.
So what road is going to go to Chambers? Bayou Gulch?
So Bayou Gulch Road, which is this road right here, once it crosses Crowfoot Valley Road, it will become Chambers and will be constructed as development occurs on the west side of Crowfoot Valley Road up to Hess.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Has traffic designated funds yet for a signal light at Bayou Gulch? And how are you going to handle the southern entrance and access? Is it just going to be by traffic sign? With 400 homes in there, it's going, or it's going to create a, Crowfoot Valley takes a lot of traffic right now.
Right, right.
So we need some sort of thing. Has that been allocated yet? Stacy, do you know, or?
It is written within the annexation agreement. So at the time that, after the sketch and preliminary plan, the next phase is the final plat, to do different phases of this development. At that time of final plat, we do look at the annexation agreement and develop a subdivision agreement, and we outline all of the fees that have to be paid, when traffic signals need to go in, if we're going to take money, until they need to be built, that sort of thing. And it's all outlined in the annexation agreement.
Yeah, thank you.
Stacy, what design considerations are the regulated by for their commercial multi-use areas? Are they the current ones, or are they previous ones?
So, within the mixed-use areas, because we do not have an application there yet, they would fall, whenever they submit, they will have to conform with those regulations. So, whenever they submit, it could be our new ones, or it could be the ones that we're currently under now.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I, I know you said that in the park, the, the active uses were kind of on, on the higher terrain. Would that also then follow that the school site, I mean, is that a hilly site or high up?
The school is higher as well.
Okay, is it, but is it a, sometimes in the past, the, the school district's gotten sites that are more like the side of a mountain.
Right, no, no, no. It's, it's, it's not, there's no difficulty in development on that.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any additional questions for Stacy?
No.
All right, as this is a public hearing, we will open the discussion to public comment. If you have a comment on the sketch and preliminary plan, please step forward and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Is this on? My name is Sharon Lors. I live at 7151 Rich Lawn Parkway in Parker, Colorado. I've lived here for 30 years. I'm a little concerned when I heard the comment that event, there is a possibility that this developing could lead on to connecting our street. Is that what I understood? At some point, they said Rich Lawn Hills?
I, I guess Stacy can.
So, and I'm going to bring up a map real quick. So, it is not going to connect into Rich Lawn Hills at this time. What we do require of all of our applications is that, it's provided through our master plan. It's one of our conditions, is that all new subdivisions have to provide connectivity to any future subdivision. And so they are providing a road that will come up, but it will not extend into Rich Lawn Estates.
Okay, thank you. I guess my second question would be on that south side or in between the two areas. Would there be a buffer zone and something that would kind of, because we're rural, quote rural, and we're going to have this other subdivision be right next to us, and we don't want it right on top of us. So that would be my question.
So, you can, I'm going to try to see my mouth. So, the Rich Lawn Estates subdivision is located here. There is a landscape buffer up here with a regional trail that will be located in between your development, the school, and then the residential development.
Okay. So there will absolutely be no connection to Rich Lawn Parkway?
Not at this time.
Okay. And I ask that purposefully, because on the north side of us, which we are Douglas County, we're not Parker, so we don't get to vote for y'all, and do you have our interest at heart? Most of us, there's 14 home sites in Rich Lawn Parkway, and we're now being hit with Merit, Meritage Homes on the other side of us wanting to connect and come through. So my question is, there's going to be a lot of access around us, and will we be able to get in and out of our neighborhoods safely? So, that's my concern.
Okay. All right, thank you, ma'am.
Do you need me to leave this here?
If you can just give it to Stacy.
Okay.
Or Bryce, either. Seeing no further comment, we will close the public comment. Any additional questions for, oh. We did, we'll have to reopen, we'll reopen the public comment.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Scott. My address is 5757 Rich Lawn Lane. One of the questions that I have is proposed to the larger park in the center of this development. Is there going to be set time limits? Are there going to be activities that occur after, say, 10 o'clock or before 7:00 a.m.? Are there going to be lights, floodlights, or anything like that? And those are my two questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Stacy, we can address those?
Yeah, so in regards to the large park and messing everything up. So, the hours of operation will fall under the town's code. Right now, our parks are open from sunrise to sunset, and that's currently under our Parks and Rec Department. If anything within the clubhouse, which is not going to be part of the town property, it would fall under the HOA and what their regulations state. Are there lights? Do you know if there's lights? No lights.
No lights, no, I didn't think so. All right. Now seeing no further comment, we'll close the public comment. Further information from staff or the applicant?
No.
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 We will close the public hearing at 7:48. Commissioner's discussion?
Well, it looks like a well-planned area with a lot of nice amenities, a lot of thought went into it. I'll approve.
I agree with Rob in that, and I also feel that the, the entire development, as it progresses north and west, it'll be a good tie-in to it. Be very curious to see the home values as they get further in their development on this. I would hope that there's a good mix for all economic opportunities for people to live in the southern part of Parker. I'll approve.
I agree with my, my fellow commissioners.
I feel that it goes a long way towards meeting the goals of the open space, master plan, the trails, that sort of thing. And it seems well-designed with varying lot sizes, so that hopefully there will be varying price points for the homes.
I have nothing to add. I was just going to say I agree with everybody.
I, it looks like it fits the nine criteria, and the referral agencies, it doesn't appear that there's anything that really suns up a red flag, so it looks like a nice development, so I'll approve.
I'm familiar with the, the laden. I'm familiar with the, the laden property in Ranabana, and if it's going to be anything like that, it, it is going to be a very beautiful development, and so I'm looking forward to seeing it progress. Do we have a motion?
I move the Planning Commission recommend the Town Council approve the Trails at Crowfoot Sketch and Preliminary Plans, subject to the town's land development ordinance and the six conditions contained in staff's report.
I second.
It's been moved by Rob, seconded by Eliana, that Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve the Trails at Crowfoot Sketch and Preliminary Plan, subject to the town's land development ordinance and the six conditions contained in staff report. Signal your approval by yes.
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 All right. Any additional items from staff?
There are no additional staff items.
All right, then we will adjourn at seven fifty.